Okay, welcome to this special meeting of the City Planning Commission.
Good afternoon. This is a City Planning Commission special meeting held in New York City City Planning Commission Hearing Room, Lower Concourse 120 Broadway. Today is Thursday, September 4th, 2018. The time is 1:04 PM. I will now call the role Chair Lago.
Here.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Here.
Commissioner Capelli.
Here.
Commissioner Cirillo.
Here.
Commissioner De La Ouz. Commissioner Duac.
Here.
Commissioner Edie.
Here.
Commissioner Afron.
Here.
Commissioner Knight.
Here.
Commissioner Levin.
Here.
Commissioner Marin.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
A quorum is present. Let's turn to Page 1 in the calendar, Report Section, Borough of Brooklyn, Calendar Number 1, CD2N190101HKK, in the matter of a communication concerning the landmark designation of Boreham Hill Historic District Extension for adoption on Calendar Number 1 for referral to the City Council. Chair Lago?
Yes.
Vice Chair Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Cirillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Duac?
Yes.
Commissioner Edie?
Yes.
Commissioner Afron?
Yes.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes.
Commissioner Levin?
Yes.
Commissioner Marin?
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz. Calendar Number 1 has been adopted.
And I think that brings to an end this special meeting.
Before we begin our agenda, we have two presentations. The first is an overview of the revisions to the Statement of Community District Needs and Budget Requests by Sarah Goldwyn and Arundhati Amarapu. Sarah?
My name is Sarah Goldwyn. I'm familiar with many of you from my time in the Brooklyn Borough Office as a planner. I now head up the Planning Coordination Team here at our Central Office of City Planning, and we're pleased to be here today to present to you information on some reforms that we've undertaken over the past three years related to two annual charter mandates, the Community District Needs Statements and the Community Board Budget Requests. As Ryan introduced, I'm joined here today by Arundhati Amarapu, who leads the work of our team, Jorge Hernandez, who leads our analytical work and forms the front line of our outreach with all project stakeholders, and our team works under the fearless leadership of John Kaufman, who's also joined us here today. I'd also like to give a shout out to our colleagues who are here with us from OMB. We're sitting here in the back of the room. So, I'd imagine some of you are well familiar with these budget-related processes, so our presentation here today will focus on three main items. First, an overview of our reforms and the key aims that we've led over these past three years. We'll then present a few high-level findings and give you a glimpse of how these changes and practices are reshaping community board engagement with agencies in ways that are more meaningfully aligned with their planning, outreach, and budgeting work. I'll step you through the initial overview, and then I'll hand it over to Arundhati, who will present the findings. We'll take all of our questions at the end. So, community boards are charged with fulfilling two annual charter mandates, both of which are critical inputs into the city's budget process. Prior to our reforms, these efforts were undertaken separately. The Community District Needs Statements, which you see on the left-hand side of the page, were submitted by all 59 boards. They were written as individual essays, and they were describing -- community boards described their vision of their districts, and they were submitted to City Planning, who would then deliver them to city agencies. In parallel, OMB would collect spreadsheets containing budget requests from all 59 boards, and they would deliver those to agencies. This bifurcated process didn't support a holistic consideration of the community needs in the context of the budget requests, nor did it provide community boards with a framework for understanding the programs and services that agencies deliver that could meet these needs. A closer view: Previously, the Statements of Needs had no standardized format. They ranged significantly in terms of form and content, ranging from a one-page cover note to 100-page essays with graphs and photos, and agencies then had to dig through them for relevant information. And as a result, community boards and agencies both questioned as to whether they were being used for their intended purpose. In some cases, community boards were opting not to submit them at all. In terms of the budget requests, they were also often misunderstood or less actionable because they were unclear, incomplete, or simply directed to the wrong agency. Here's an example on the screen many of you may be familiar with as a project, this example of a request for renovation of Bam Park. And while some location information was provided, there was no explanation of the request whatsoever, and the responsible agency that it was directed to was not the responsible agency. So you can see that this is an example of where some frustration may have been felt on the part of agencies where they were not getting the information they needed to action a request. So, through our reform that was led in partnership with OMB, we've unified these two processes through the creation of a single online submission form with direct links to agency-specific resources that enable the community boards to better describe and substantiate both the statements and their budget requests. An example of some of these online links include DCP's own community portal and our community district profiles, which are both rich with data and planning information, both from our agency and links to other sister agencies' information. And as a result, these community board submissions that are now delivered to agencies together are more clear, they are more cohesive, and in time for informing the proposals for the city's preliminary budget. We're very pleased to share that all 59 boards submitted their needs and budget requests last year for the first time in many. This in turn has resulted in a renewed focus by all stakeholders involved and has begun to improve the quality and the dialogue with community boards and agencies. In turn, this is getting at our aim of more directly informing agencies' planning, budgeting, and outreach activities. And as an example, here at City Planning, we share these borough reports with each of our borough offices so that the planners all have this information as one of the many pieces of planning informations that they are using to inform more coordinated neighborhood and citywide planning. I'll now hand it over to Arundhati, who will step you through a closer view of the key takeaways from our initial efforts.
Standardizing the collection of the community board needs and information has actually allowed us a dataset on community board perspectives that we never had before. So for the past three years, we actually had this dataset, and as Sarah mentioned earlier, last year we had all 59 community boards actually using this new online form. So what I'd like to do is actually show you some interesting findings from this dataset from this past year. So what you see on this slide here is a question that we've put forward to community boards that asks them, "What are the top three pressing issues affecting your district overall?" And this provides a high-level glimpse into how community boards actually think about their needs that affect their district as a whole. So if you look at the chart, you see a few issues that are listed on the left, and this is the dropdown menu that's available to community boards. And the bar graph on the right shows the number of mentions the community boards have actually done in selecting these issues and how this actually breaks across different boroughs. So for this past year, affordable housing, schools, and traffic are actually the top most pressing issues that community boards have selected. And perhaps this may or may not surprise you that these are the top issues that have been selected by boards. But what this high-level view actually does is it shows us a few things. For one, it shows us how community board perspectives perhaps might actually change over time. So for example, crime, which is an issue way at the bottom of this particular graph, was selected by three boards this past fiscal year, but previous to that, it was selected by 10 community boards. So when NYPD accesses this kind of information, they know statistically crime has decreased across the city, but now we know that community boards' perception of crime has also decreased, and it reflects not just the statistical data, but also the perceived data. The other use for some information like this could also be to sort of help inform broader outreach strategies. Both DCP and HPD are heavily involved in affordable housing policy, and looking at this particular graph, we see that only 30 of the 59 community boards have actually selected affordable housing as their top issue. So what have the other boards selected? And how do we actually think about our outreach and our communication and tailoring messages to those boards who have selected affordable housing as their top issue and for those who haven't? So moving on to show you a few more pieces of information, I'd actually like to explain how this form is actually structured. So the entire form is actually structured against seven distinct policy areas. So moving away from the top three pressing issues, we're looking at these policy areas. And these policy areas are actually aligned to the way the Mayor's Office of Operations' domain areas, but we've also found that they're aligned to the way community boards actually think about their issues. They don't think about their issues as agency-specific, they think as broader thematic areas. And looking at some of these community boards, a lot of them actually organize their committees around these different thematic areas. So different agencies are actually nested within these policy areas. So for example, our agency, the Department of City Planning, is under Housing Economic Development and Land Use Policy Area. Now, for each of these policy areas, we actually collect different pieces of information. So the first thing we collect is something, we ask the community boards, "What is your most important issue within this particular policy area? Do you have any agency-specific needs that you want to sort of be nested under this policy area?" And the third piece of information that we ask them, which is perhaps where the greatest innovation of this particular form is, is in the standardization of the budget request categories themselves. So when we created this online form, we actually went to every city, single city agency, and we asked them, "What is it that you actually do? Tell us what you do, tell us what programs and services you actually have." And we created a standardized list that we then shared with community boards. So this first helps them align their overarching needs with the actionable budget requests themselves. It allows them to actually ask for things of the city in a language that we actually can understand. And it also levels the playing field. A lot of different community boards don't actually know what the city does. So going back to an example that Sarah showed you earlier, we had a community board that was asking for renovating a park, but the agency was going to HPD. So really sort of looking at aligning what the city agencies actually do with the right agency and putting it in the context of their overarching needs is something that this form is actually trying to do through this process. So let's look at one of these policy areas, and I'll show you a couple of findings. So I'm going to go into the Housing Economic Development and Land Use Policy Area. So this particular slide shows us information related to the most important issue within this particular policy area. So the table on the left shows a dropdown menu that's available to community boards. So for example, their options are anywhere between Condition of Public Housing to Affordable Housing Programs. And the map on the right shows the issues that these boards actually selected within this particular policy area. And perhaps not surprising, this map is very colorful, and the reason it's colorful is because every community board does have different issues. Now, by looking at it a little bit further, we can see maybe there are some trends within this particular policy area. So every single community board that's actually highlighted in red are the boards that have selected affordable housing programs as their most important issue within this policy area. And those that are highlighted in orange are the ones who have selected the second most common issue for this particular year, which is zoning review and enforcement. Now, by looking at the map, we can see what is the spatial distribution of these particular issues. So looking at it further, we see there are a lot of boards in Brooklyn and Queens and the east side of Manhattan that have actually selected affordable housing, and this also reflects a lot of the outreach that we do to sort of think about how these community boards often think about these issues and how they prioritize them against other issues as well. Now, for each of these particular selections, community boards actually provide an accompanying narrative. And this accompanying narrative is really where they help provide the flavor and the context of how they perceive this as one of their most important issues affecting their district. So here is an example of Bronx Community Board 5, and Bronx Community 4-5 is specifically looking at Jerome Avenue and have sort of asked for a zoning change that can help encourage more mixed-use development. And this is something that they've asked for several years leading up to the certification this past year as well. In looking further at some of these other issues of the boards that have selected affordable housing, they often select different types of issues. Sometimes they talk about the lack of a number of affordable housing units, sometimes they talk about affordability as a whole, and sometimes it's related to specific types of housing, like encouraging more mixed-use development or special needs housing related to seniors. So the real context and the flavor of this particular community board perspective information really comes from the narratives which we now organize and share publicly on our website. Another example here of another issue, which is zoning review and enforcement, is from Brooklyn Community Board 10, which is primarily a residential community district, that what they have sort of highlighted as the most important issue within this particular policy area is related to illegal housing conversions and lack of compliance to building code as well as zoning enforcement. And this is something that would be particularly interesting to DOB, for example, when they actually look at these community board perspectives. So moving on from the overarching needs and how community boards think about this, I want to spend a little bit of time talking about the budget requests themselves. Like I've mentioned earlier, one of the innovations of this form is actually standardizing the budget request categories themselves. So this particular table, on the left, you can see a column that has all of the standardized budget request categories that are related to the Department of Parks. And if you go from left to right across this particular table, you can see the number of budget requests against each of these categories that was submitted by all the boards within the Manhattan community boards, which are 12 out of the 59 community boards. The most common budget request that came from here is reconstruct, upgrade, or park or amenity, and the second most common request that came from Manhattan boards are reconstruct or upgrade a building in a park. Now, the Department of Parks, prior to this process, had no way of actually knowing the types of budget requests that came in or if there was any aggregated need related to a particular type of program area that they offer that comes from community boards. And this can help inform future planning needs for them as they think through their programs going forward, but it can also help inform any outreach that they might have. Perhaps they have existing programs in this particular budget request area, and they want to go back and talk to these community boards about what they're already doing in this area. And this helps them give that snapshot view to the Department of Parks. We don't just ask community boards to select standardized budget request category, we also ask them to provide us with a lot of contextual information related to this particular budget request. So going back to another example from the Department of Parks, this is a budget request that came from Bronx Community Board 4. The first piece of information that community boards provide is something called as a priority. So they have several requests that come to the city, and now they actually spend a lot of time working and having public hearings to actually prioritize these budget requests. So in this particular instance, this particular budget request is the third most important request that's come to them out of the 25 budget requests, capital requests that they submitted to the city. The second line there shows the standardized budget request, which is what I mentioned earlier, which is provide a new or expanded park or amenity. They provide some contextual explanation for why this particular request is important to them, and they also provide the location information related to it. So what we found through this new process now is that community boards are actually able to engage with the city, ask for information that is related to what and aligned to what city agencies actually do, and is substantiated through this information that can help agencies better understand how they actually can incorporate this into future planning and decision-making that they do. Now that I've given you a little bit of insight into some of the findings that are related to this data, we'd like to talk a little bit about who our stakeholders are in this broader process. We have five key stakeholders, the most important of which are city agencies themselves, because the pieces of information that come from these community boards are most relevant to the work programs that they do. We also engage with different mayoral agencies, with borough presidents' offices, with community boards themselves, and of course, our own planners here at DCP. So in our outreach to city agencies, we focus primarily on what we call the top 10 agencies, or the agencies that receive the most number of budget requests from community boards. And we go out to them with our partners at OMB to actually share this information with them. And we have found that since the quality of the community board information has actually gotten better, we've found anecdotally they're using it for different things. For example, the Department of Small Business Services was actually able to find some grant funding towards a storefront revitalization project for Community Board 6 in the Bronx. With City Hall, we found that CAU, which is the Mayor's Office of Community Affairs Unit, actually used a lot of these community board reports to help prepare packages for town hall meetings, for the mayor's briefings for the different mayoral town halls in all the different boroughs. With the borough presidents' offices, who support community boards and offer them a lot of training, they were able to get insights into which community boards actually require more training and support, and also help them in their advocacy work with different electeds and agencies themselves. With community boards, as always, they use this information to help with their discussions, ongoing engagement with different city agencies, as well as CBOs. And with our planners, in standardizing this information, they're better able to understand how community boards actually perceive their needs and use them as considerations in our neighborhood planning. Another example being Bronx 5 has, prior to this year and several years before, have added Jerome Study as a request to the community board, to the Department of Planning. So where does this leave us now, and what's next? So now we're about to enter our fourth year in this reform process, and we continue to provide community boards with different tools and information to support the quality of their submission, including providing them with the wealth of resources to help articulate and substantiate their needs better. An example being, previous to this year, we came and demonstrated the community portal to you, so really having substantiated population and social demographic information to help them back up some of their needs is something that we work a lot here at City Planning. We continue to engage with different stakeholders and share information with them to help inform more equitable planning and decision-making among city agencies. And most importantly, this process cannot replace an ongoing dialogue that community boards should have with city agencies, and we feel by helping them and supporting them in improving the quality of their submissions and the way they articulate their needs, we can actually help promote a more meaningful dialogue between city agencies and community boards. And finally, we do this to help, to demonstrate to our communities that we are listening to what they have to say. Thank you very much.
I'll make two observations before opening it up for questions. The first is the traction that we have with the Department of Parks and Recreation and with transportation is particularly important because they have such large capital budgets, and they've been very interested in this. But at the opposite end of the spectrum, John has been invited to present to the Police Commissioner, because the Deputy Commissioner was so struck by the fact that only three community boards listed crime as their top three, which is rather remarkable. The second observation that I'll make is that this work was enabled by technology, but we should not underestimate the human element, that this team went out to community boards, talking about changing a process, doing things differently, and encountered initially a lot of suspicion, at times hostility. And by doing it year after year, we have been so pleased by the growing relationship, which leads to better quality information. And so with that, I'll toss it open to questions. Commissioner Afron.
First of all, a giant thank you. It's a really impressive, forward-looking opportunity. I imagine it'll increase or hold high the quality of people who become community board members, knowing that there's actually a real interaction that's budget-related. My only question is whether there's any tie-in to the Mayor's Management Report, and if that is sort of a natural part of the cycle, so that if items are really community needs and they are met by a budget and there's an outcome, if it could be noted somewhere in the MMR, it would certainly have a different degree of responsiveness when people engage with it. It's my only thought.
I think that's an interesting connection. We certainly thought about the tie-in with the Mayor's Management Report as we were designing the sort of overall structure, as Arundhati alluded to, with the policy areas. And actually, embedded within the form, we include links to specific agency resources within those different categories, including links to the Mayor's Management Report, because should anyone from the public, including community boards, be interested in the outcomes that happen as a result of the service delivery, those tie-ins could be found in the Mayor's Management Report. And there should be the alignment with the operations, programs, and services that are requested and delivered by agencies in a way that is aligned with what is prepared and communicated through the Mayor's Management Report.
Yes, Commissioner Ortiz.
Hi, good morning. I agree, this is really impressive work, and I'm curious, are these reports available to the public?
The community board reports that include their full needs statement, their top issues, and their prioritized budget requests are all available online through City Planning's community portal. So when you go into the portal, it's organized by community district, and if you go under each community district under Resources, you can click there and find the link to their reports.
Do many community boards make those available on their website?
They do.
Is that standard practice?
They do.
Okay, great.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Cirillo.
Just a question, and thank you for this. This is, I think, going to be very helpful to all of our communities. Just a, is there a location in the questionnaire that enables a community board to identify whether or not a request had been made previously? And how long? I mean, I know if you compared each year's data, you would be able to see it, but is there a simple place to say, "This is year four that we're requesting this," or "Year two"?
Yes. So where the budget requests are, there is an optional field, which is a previous year submitted.
Okay.
So yeah, we can track that as well, but again, it depends on the community board if they want to track it or not. Sometimes when they have new leadership, they often start from the beginning. So there might be a request that is tied to a previous request, but most of the time we are starting to collect that information and give them that option.
Okay, that's terrific. I mean, I think that's helpful, too, over time, to see, obviously, if priorities have changed or if the priorities have not yet been addressed, for a variety of reasons, which could be obviously many. I guess the only follow-up question I would have is, when looking at the stakeholders, and I realize the role we play and where we fit into the structure of government, but the City Council is not listed as a stakeholder, and I realize we're not doing this work for the council, and they have their own system, I still believe there really could be a very valuable result in reviewing this kind of a data. And I realize it's publicly accessible from the previous question, but is there any intent to share this directly with the council? Because as they prioritize their funding, I mean, I realize they have their own relationships with all of the players in this process, but I can't imagine it wouldn't be helpful, and how do we see that working, if at all?
In our initial efforts over these first three years, we've really been focusing on, as we've used in the course of this presentation, leveling the playing field and sort of making sure that those who are most directly related to the mandates have the information they need and that we had full participation so that the data could be most valuable to all involved. We do also know that, through working with community boards, that they use these reports directly in communication with their council members, so we know that in that way, the information's been shared. But to your point of whether we, as City Planning, may then go to that next step of sharing with the council, it's certainly something that we are considering, and now that we've reached this point in the process, I think it's something that we'll look at more closely.
And look, their priorities will be their own, clearly, but I think with, I don't think limited resources will change dramatically over time, and the idea that there could be some, potentially, combination of, you know, whether it's mayoral money and council money or borough president money, that those are the funding streams for most, if not all, of these kinds of priorities, and I just see the value in it, but we'll see. But I appreciate that.
It's helpful feedback, thanks.
I think that's a useful suggestion of making sure that we offer a briefing to council central staff so that they're aware of it. I can tell you, whenever I meet with a council member, I always have loaded on my iPad their community district profile, and initially, I was struck by how interested they were in it. Now, I'm struck by how many of them already know about it, which is a good thing. Yes, Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you. What is the timeframe for compiling this information and submission? I see, I think it's on page 7, it says submissions from October 2017. So is that a...
Yes, it's an annual submission, so it's end of every October, so we're gearing up for the fourth year of the online form.
So essentially, I had to get it done in September and October?
Yes. They often schedule public hearings for this particular information that usually takes place in October, sometimes the first week of November, so we usually, last year, we got all of our submissions by the second week of November.
Thank you. Thank you.
So the agencies receive the information by January? So it doesn't take a whole year to get that?
Budget process.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes, as someone who, long ago, tried to grapple with these requirements at the community board level, this looks like a vast improvement. Just because the process was equally baffling, maybe baffling to the city agencies receiving the inputs, but it was pretty baffling from the community board level to understand what in the world it was we were supposed to be, what narrative was important, and what's the best way to advocate for the things that we really wanted to have happen. But one important part of that process were the community consultations, which is a little bit like speed dating with senior members of each of the agencies. And we'd all sort of gather in a high school and rotate around like fish in an aquarium. But those were really, I found those consultations very useful, to be able to have a one-on-one conversation with the, you know, the Borough Commissioner of DOT about individual issues at a community board level. There's a quality of communication that happens. It's the way we would often find out that things that had been priorities for us were, in fact, also priorities for the agency. It was a way to share information and a way to kind of build personal trust in the city agencies to know that there was a real person out there who was caring about these things and, you know, that the neighborhood was going to get better as a result. Are those community consultations still part of this process?
They are. Councilmember Levin is referring to the Borough Budget Consultations, which take place this month and next out in the boroughs. And the different leadership from this, different city agencies meet together with community boards. They're convened by OMB. And we've encouraged community boards to use these reports for setting their agendas for those conversations and for sharing information in advance of those hearings, those meetings, the discussions with agencies, so that those two can be more fruitful and informed conversations, better tied to the priorities of both the community boards and agencies. So we've really encouraged both, in our, through our outreach, both community boards to use these for that purpose and also to use agencies, advise agencies to use these as inputs to help them prepare more meaningfully for those discussions.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have an update on the design of the Bronx Point Project by Oscar Oliver Didier of the Bronx Office.
This is a follow-through on the commitment that I had made to the commission at the time of approval, to keep the commission informed of how the design has evolved. And I'll steal a little bit of Oscar's thunder by noting that we're very pleased with the direction in which it's evolving.
Thank you. Yeah, there you go. Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. If you recall, a specific protocol was established in the resolution of CPC for the Lower Concourse North Project. This project is now called Bronx Point. This project, I would just remind you, is also subject to PDC review. Because a developer and project were not chosen prior to ULEP, this mechanism was created to ensure high-quality urban design standards regarding, number one, massing and bulk, number two, open space integration with Milpom Park, and finally, ground-floor retail location. This post-ULEP review by the chair ensures the project remains consistent with the commission's overall design goals for the area. In terms of the massing, and just to orient everybody here, you sort of see 145th Street Bridge sort of right here, and then Mayor Deegan Expressway here with Exterior Street underneath, and then Milpom Park. In terms of the massing and in compliance with our Harlem River Waterfront Special District rules, various things are done. One, a wide opening towards Milpom Park to ensure less bulk and shadows on that space, a lower base height and human scale towards the water, and then allocation of height closer to the bridge back here, which I just pointed out, and away from the park and the water itself. In terms of retail location in the ground floor, and sort of going counterclockwise here, you sort of see here, up on the top, a small retail space. Right next to it, you have the cinema entrance. This is all sort of facing Exterior Street. And then you have a big, around 10,000-square-foot retail frontage. Then sort of turning around and looking onto the northern side and facing Milpom Park, you sort of see the museum entrance. This is going to be the hip-hop museum. And then another sort of small retail location here on the corner. This is then followed, and now we're sort of on the corner of Milpom Park and then the shoreline itself, we sort of see a grand, we'll see some other views that show it better, but we still see a grand staircase here that are going to provide views for both the park and the shoreline. Finally, you sort of have here a community facility space that will house both Bronx Works and City Science. City Science is a nonprofit bringing STEM education and environmental stewardship for youth in the community. Then followed by the second and third story. On the second story, the space is basically completely covered by the hip-hop museum. And then on the third story itself, here shown in purple, is the movie theater itself, which also takes up the entirety of the floor's place. Now, looking at the eastern elevation, so just to orient here, you have the Mayor Deegan Expressway. We're sort of looking from 145th Street Bridge. You see various things, left to right. You see the cinema entrance, then you sort of see the larger retail space over here in the ground floor, and then the smaller corner retail over to the right. You also see, in terms of the bulk, how the massing is sort of being broken apart by this sort of articulation and sort of ins and outs. And then northern elevation, which, this is the elevation that faces Milpom Park, you sort of see the larger retail here, again, left to right, followed by the museum entrance and the transparency that sort of goes along with it, and then the grand viewing stairs over here. And you also have the big opening, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong slide. Here we go. And you sort of have the big opening here, fronting onto Milpom Park. And then this is the western elevation, which sort of faces the shoreline. You sort of have the grand viewing stairs over here, the museum, and then the community facility, which we just talked about. You should also see how the building sort of terraces down towards the water. Another view here, this view is specifically from 49th Street and Exterior Street, from that corner, you sort of see the Deegan Expressway here above. And you sort of have the residential lobby entrance here on the corner, and then the retail space here with the transparency and access to it. This other view, which is from 150th Street and Exterior Street, you sort of see here on the ground floor, the larger retail space over to the left, and then the museum entrance towards the right, facing Milpom Park. And then, right above, you see the, sort of, the opening towards Milpom Park as well. And then this bird's eye view from the north shows you various things. One thing is that the hip-hop museum is going to have this sort of open terrace that is going to have access to that, and both to the museum and both to the actual grand staircase. You sort of see here also the uplink connection that is part of the requirements, is part of the waterfront public access. And then finally, you sort of have here some of the frontage of both the community facility and the museum itself. This other view is from the shoreline, in other words, the southwest. Again, you sort of have the museum towards your left, the community facility as well, and then the residential lobby right over here. And then in the back, you sort of see the Deegan Expressway. This other view is from Milpom Park itself. You sort of see how the building is sort of terracing down towards the water. And you also see the required opening facing Milpom Park to make sure it's, making sure it's not having impacts in terms of shadows and in terms of bulk. So, in other words, this is the existing site and how it is right now with the existing Milpom Park. And this is the proposal itself, which will have the Milpom Park extension here to your left, and then the building itself, and then Phase Two, which is the taller portion of development, which is going to come in the future. In terms of the open space design, and also going from left to right, you sort of see proposals, or as part of the proposal, an outdoor fitness area both here and over here, next to the bridge on the sort of southern tip. Some improvements to the barbecue area itself and extensions of it. It is very popular. Marsh preservation areas over here in the inlet. A playground that is ADA-accessible, right here, next to the building as well. And then the viewing stairs, which are also ADA-accessible. In terms of the maintenance agreement, the hatched area will be developer-maintained, and then the area in orange will be parks-maintained, although the developer will build this out. Just as a reminder, in terms of the next step, the project was already certified on March 20th, 2017, adopted by city council on October 17th, and then the project finally will return to the commission for UDEP later this fall. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Questions? Yes, Commissioner Marine.
Just to recap, how many units in the building? Is it one building? Is it a conglomerate of three different buildings, four different buildings? How many units? It is one development, two phases. That first phase is 540 affordable units. Okay. And it's one entrance, one lobby? I want to say yes.
Can we get the presentation back up?
We can look at the, now. I mean, it has to comply with code, but at least here in the plans, let me just make sure we go. So we have this residential lobby over here. Yes, and then you would have egress over here. So in terms of compliance with code, I'm sure that that's like the only residential lobby entrance. But I can confirm if need be. No, just curious. Yeah. Just curious.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
I was curious, do they have any sense of the kinds of tenants they envision in that space?
In the big retail space?
Yeah.
No, I don't think that they do.
Okay.
It's not to my knowledge.
You know, it's striking that, you know, the street very much feels like back of house. And that, I guess reasonably, the decision was made to orient all the activity, you know, catty-corner to Bronx Terminal Market. But, you know, it definitely is a decision made. And I'm curious how Phase Two, what we envision the ground floor of Phase Two to be, because, you know, ground floor retail on a single-loaded corridor there will struggle. And so this decision has implications for the second phase, and certainly implications for how active the street can be. You know, we're choosing not to activate it in this design. So it's worth making that point, and I understand why they've done it. But, you know, that's what we're going to end up having challenges with in Phase Two.
I see. Point taken.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
No, I just wanted to ask Commissioner Ortiz, which street are you referring to?
Oh, the access road, right there, yeah.
Right.
It's like the western facade?
The southern. Southern facade. So you would have the smaller retail space here in the corner. You would have the residential lobby and then communal space. And then the, you know, outside of the building, yes, but the fitness area over here. But yeah, point taken.
Yes, Commissioner Levin.
I have two questions. One is whether the, first off, I appreciate having this look at the design. I think some of us were a little challenged by the fact that EDC chose to take this through ULEP before we had this level of detail. So it's, I'm grateful that you brought it back. I wonder if this kind of presentation is being made to the community board, in particular, what role the local community has had or will have in the planning for the open space.
I'm not sure I can confirm. I do know that they were heavily involved in the decisions in terms of the locations of the different uses around the open areas. And there were some final decisions that they really had heavy input on.
Well, at a minimum, this presentation is now going to be available on the City Planning website. And perhaps you could just let the local community board know that the presentation has been made and encourage them to come take a look.
Right, definitely.
So, yeah, no, I think making this kind of information publicly available would be very valuable. And then just a point of curiosity, what's the status of the development site on the south side of 145th Street? That's not this project, but?
That's still part of the special district, but outside of this lot.
Yeah. Is that still stalled out?
To my knowledge, there are still no interested developers. But we've seen the area pick up, and we've seen a lot more interest than we did back in '09. But I think that nothing is sort of strong yet or developed yet. We've had a lot of questions, though, and people sort of getting in contact with us to get more information.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. This is a review session of the New York City Planning Commission on Monday, September 4th, 2018. The time is now 1:49. The first item on the agenda is a certification of zoning map and zoning text amendments in Bronx Community District 11. Manny Legarres of the Bronx Office is here to present.
Okay, this is the Williams Bridge Road rezoning. The applicant is a private applicant, 2712 Ratliff Yates Realty LLC. And they're requesting a zoning map amendment from CA 1 to R 7A C 2 3, also a zoning text amendment to Appendix F for the zoning resolution to designate the rezoning area as an MIH area. The project is located in the, in Community District Number 11 in the North Bronx. And I just want to add that this is the first MIH in Community District Number 11. This is an overview of the area. In the center, bounded in red, is your development site. And as you can see, you have pretty wide streets, Boston Road, Allerton, Williams Bridge Road. And on the upper left-hand portion of the photograph, you can see the Number 2 and 5 subway line. The, there's also good bus service into the area along Allerton, along Boston Road, and along Williams Bridge Road. This is a blow-up of that section, showing you the block and the development site in red. This gives you a better view. You're looking from east to west, where you actually see the rezoning area that's outlined in blue, as well as the development site. The project area, which is the rezoning area, consists of seven lots. Now, as, I'm going to start on the corner, on the left-hand side, where you see the six-story residential building with ground-floor commercial. That's one of the lots. The one in the middle, the development site, is owned by the applicant. And the one on Colder Avenue is a parking lot. The one fronting on Williams Bridge Road is a one-story residential and office use. To the right, along Colder Avenue, to the right, you have that one-story building. It's auto repairs. And as you can see, the parking that goes along with it. And as you move further to the right, you'll see a one-story building. And basically, what you have there is a meat distributor at the corner, and you also have a plumbing store. As you move a little up, fronting on Boston Road, you have a car wash. Now, those uses, of course, are permitted as of right in your CA 1 zoning district. This is your area map, which actually shows you the project area. And you can see that around the CA 1, there's a sea of yellow, which is basically 1, 2, 3 family, even some multiple dwellings. These are photographs of the site. You're looking at northwest along Colder Avenue, and that's your six-story building that I showed you earlier. The second one on the right is taken at Colder Avenue, looking the other direction, southwest, and you have basically the properties that are involved in the rezoning area. And the final one is also a view along Colder Avenue. Now, the other portion of the block, again, is an irregularly shaped block, triangular. And this is Williams Bridge Road. You can actually see the one-story with office space controlled by the applicant, as well as the six-story building. On the right, again, you have a view of Williams Bridge Road facing north, looking northeast, and you have that six-story building with the ground-floor commercial. And the bottom photo is a view of both streets. You have Colder Avenue on your left, and you have, no, Colder Avenue on your right and Williams Bridge Road on your left. The applicant is proposing a nine-story building, mixed-use building, approximately 35,000 square feet of residential floor area. 35,000 square feet of residential floor area, also 5,000 square feet of commercial floor area. Thirty-five units are proposed. And in this drawing, you can see that the entrance is along Williams Bridge Road, the arrows to the commercial, the first arrow, the one in the middle is the commercial, and the one on the right is for the parking, which will be in the cellar. And along Colderen Avenue, that will be the entrance to the lobby indicated by the arrow to the lobby of the residential structure. And as you can see, the proposed commercial use is just one-story. It is a one-story building. And this is your elevations. The one on the left actually shows you the parking on the cellar level, commercial on the first, and the second through eighth are residential. And on your ninth, the ninth story, you have the terrace, which will have an accessory gym for the residents of the building. This is your zoning map, which actually shows you the outline of the CA-1 zoning district, which, as you know, permits heavy commercial uses such as automobile repair, showrooms, car washes, gasoline stations, et cetera. The FAR is 1.0 in your CA-1 zoning district, and housing is prohibited. The drawing on the right actually shows you the proposed rezoning to R-7A-C-23, which will allow for the higher development to nine stories, approximately 95 feet. And this is your zoning map for the MIH, and the applicant has chosen option one and option two. Option one would be nine units, and option two will be 11. And the final, I want to leave you with this photograph here, the frontage on Williams Bridge Road, and also on Colderen Avenue. Are there any questions?
Commissioner Frum.
Thank you. Thank you for noting this is the first MIH project in this community district. The six-story building, is that under any rent regulation at all?
I checked, and you do have subsidy, rent regulated. We don't know how many units, because you need a special license to obtain that information, but just looking at the records, that building is rent stabilized.
Okay, that's good. And on the backside of that building, are there lot line windows that will be covered by the taller section of this project?
On the... Let me just go back.
It's hard to say it's back or front. It's a strange configuration.
Yes.
Be adjacent, thank you.
Okay. Okay, windows for the new development, correct? Is that your question, or are there existing windows?
No, well, I appreciate that the one-story section is near the backyards of the, or with the rear of the four-unit buildings. But the six-story building has one adjacent side to the new project, new building.
Right. There are windows. There are windows from the existing building, yes.
Okay. And I would just want to confirm that those are not the primary windows for the units.
Okay, yes. Okay, we'll check.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Yes, Commissioner Levin.
Manny, do you happen to know the local AMI?
Yes, it's $47,000 for the community district.
Okay, so that's actually a little below what option one would bring them anyway, right?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, the application is certified.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the second item on the agenda, page number 22, is a certification for site selection and acquisition in Staten Island, Community District III. And his first time presenting in the Commission is George Todor...
Pretty close, yeah. Thanks, Ryan. All right, good afternoon, Commissioners. This is an application submitted by the New York City Department of Parks and Recreation and the New York City Department of Citywide Administrative Services for the acquisition and site selection of two privately-owned parcels in order to expand and preserve existing city parkland. The project area is located near Great Kilos Harbor in the Eltingville neighborhood of Staten Island's Community District III. The project site consists of two tax lots located along Highland Boulevard, outlined here on the area map. The area consists of predominantly single-family detached homes and a few commercial uses. One office building at the intersection of Woods of Arden Road and Highland Boulevard, as well as a few residential home offices further along Highland Boulevard. The surrounding area consists of an R-12 residential zone, which permits large, single-family homes on large lots, and an R-31 residential zone, which permits detached and semi-detached homes up to three stories. Both residential districts permit an FAR of .5. There are two city-owned parcels in the surrounding area, Crescent Beach Park, which is six acres located east of the project site, and of course, Olmsted Beale House Park, which is 1.5 acres located northwest, directly adjacent to the project site. Olmsted Beale House Park and the project site were both originally part of a 130-acre farm that dates back to 1685. Frederick Law Olmsted owned and lived on the property's farmhouse from 1848 until 1855. The Olmsted Beale House was designated as a New York City landmark in 1967 and determined eligible for listing on the National Register of Historic Places in 1999. In 2004, the City Planning Commission approved the acquisition mapping of Olmsted Beale House as city-owned parkland to facilitate the creation of an education center and recreation center. However, restoration of the house has been delayed, and Olmsted Beale House Park is currently closed to the general public. The project site totals approximately 53,000 square feet of lot area and 133 feet of frontage on Highland Boulevard, 121 feet of that frontage on Lot 80, and a 12-foot wide easement for Lot 99. Lot 80 is accessed by a gravel driveway within the roadbed of Orchard Lane South and is shared with the adjacent property on Lot 55. Lot 99 is accessed by the 12-foot wide easement, which also provides access to Lot 100, a privately-owned residence, and also provides DPR staff or Parks Department staff access to Olmsted Beale House Park. The proposal would facilitate the future expansion and preservation of Olmsted Beale House Park in order to improve future accessibility and programming to the park. Lot 80 is a 40,777 square foot parcel that is developed with a detached, single-family, two-and-a-half-story home built in the early 1900s. The New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation recently determined that the house on Lot 80 is eligible for listing on the National Register of Historic Places. However, New York City LPC, the Landmarks Preservation Commission, determined that the architectural and historic significance of the house does not rise to individual landmark status. Lot 99 is a 12,500 square foot vacant lot, which includes the 12-foot wide easement. Since Lot 99 is a flag lot, the majority of this parcel is set back from Highland Boulevard. So in closing, the Department of Parks and DCS are requesting the site selection and acquisition of two privately-owned parcels. At this time, no alterations of any kind have been determined for the project site, including the existing house on Lot 80. Once Lot 80 and 99 have been acquired, Department of Parks will seek funding to incorporate the project site within Olmsted Beale House Park and create a schematic design to improve future accessibility and programming. I can now take any questions. Thank you.
Questions? Commissioner Cirillo.
Just based on your last comment, the funding exists today for the acquisition, but the funding you're speaking, you just mentioned, is for design for the future redesign of the park. That is not yet identified.
No, not at the moment. Currently, they just have enough funding, the Parks Department does, for the acquisition.
Yes.
And later on, they will then seek funding for the schematic design of the programmatic elements, which they hope to expand for Olmsted Beale House Park.
Okay, great.
Commissioner Capelli.
Just following up with that, that's when they'll make a ULP application to designate a parkland?
Right, that's when the mapping of the parkland could be done at that time.
Thank you.
Commissioner Frum.
I'm just curious, are there other historic house parks in Staten Island where there's been a successful program of this sort?
Oh, yeah, there's several historic houses in Staten Island. Off the top of my head, I don't know the specific history of them, but there's Conference House Park, which has a great history to it. I mean, the Commissioners could probably speak more to it than I can.
We can probably either speak to the Commissioner or the new executive director.
There are tons of successful examples, and this one has just been delayed due to specific issues that Parks could probably speak to when they present.
Terrific, thank you.
Right.
Other questions? Okay, another certified application.
Thank you.
Item number three, page 40, is a certification for site selection and acquisition in Manhattan, Community District Nine. Our presenter is Edwin Marshall.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. The Department of Parks and Recreation and the Department of Citywide Administrative Services seek a site selection and acquisition approval to facilitate the enlargement of an existing community garden. The garden is located within West Harlem in Manhattan, Community District Nine. The proposed acquisition site is located at 510 West 143rd Street, Block 2074, Lot 146. The proposed acquisition site abuts the Frank White Memorial Garden, which comprises two city-owned lots, Lots 45 and 46. Since 1999 to 2000, the Frank White Memorial Garden has been managed by Brotherhood Sister Soul, which is a local nonprofit, and I'll speak to that in my next slide, which has also developed and managed the acquisition site, the proposed acquisition site, as a community garden. The requested action before the Commission today would enable the applicants to acquire Lot 146 and assemble it with the Frank White Memorial Garden. Just a little bit of background about Brotherhood Sister Soul, also known as Bro Sis. Founded in 1995, Brotherhood Sister Soul is a Harlem-based youth organization that provides long-term support services to youth who range in age from eight to 22. Bro Sis serves about 1,000 young people, at which 400 are served from the Harlem location. Bro Sis focuses on issues such as leadership development, educational achievement, health and wellness, and global awareness. They also promote resiliency awareness and environmental education, for which this community garden plays a key role. This image shows the existing build condition of the neighborhood. The proposed acquisition site is outlined in red, and you can see that the Frank White Garden is the space just to the left of the red rectangle. The surrounding neighborhood comprises five- to six-story multifamily buildings along West 143rd Street, as well as along Broadway and Hamilton Place, and the community garden and the proposed acquisition site is located on the south side of West 143rd Street between Broadway and Hamilton Place. Thank you. This image shows what's happening on 143rd Street, the frontage. You can, the Commission can see the community garden in the middle of this image. To the right of that is a three-story brownstone rowhouse building. That's where Brotherhood Sister Soul has their offices. And to the left, it's a five-, six-story multifamily building, fully occupied and very good condition. And the proposed acquisition site is behind the blue rectangle that you can see along the fence in front of the community garden. This provides a better image of what's happening along 143rd Street. You can see the community garden, the full front of the garden. The proposed acquisition site is behind that blue rectangle, and to the right of that is the Bro Sis, Brotherhood Sister Soul offices, and to the left of the garden is the occupied six-story multifamily building. Last image, we're looking through the garden from 143rd Street. Everything to the right of the trellis is the proposed acquisition site. The proposed, the community garden is located underneath the trellis and to the left of the trellis. This is a site plan that shows what's happening in terms of the community garden and its relationship to the proposed acquisition site. The existing community garden, which comprises a little more than 3,700 square feet, is shown in the green, and the proposed acquisition site, which comprises a little more than 1,800 square feet, is outlined in the red. In total, if assembled, the one assembled with the existing community garden, the entire garden would comprise a little more than 5,600 square feet. So in closing, the proposed action before the Commission today would enable the applicants, the Department of Parks and Recreation, as well as the Department of Citywide Administrative Services, to assemble a privately-owned lot, Lot 146, with two city-owned lots, 45 and 46, on Block 2074, to enlarge the Frank White Memorial Garden. That concludes my presentation.
Questions? Yes, Commissioner Levin.
You have two questions. Is the funding in hand for the acquisition?
Yes.
And from what source? From...
It comes from DPR.
DPR?
Yes.
And who is Frank White?
Frank White, it's a very sad story. Sometime in the 1980s, there was a block party on the street. A driver tried to make his way down the street. The street was closed. An argument ensued, and the driver pulled the weapon and started firing into the crowd. Frank White basically used his body to shield the children that were on the street from the bullets and succumbed to his injuries, the wounds. So every year, they hold a block party in Mr. White's honor.
That'll be a better block party if we've got All Park.
Yeah.
Other questions? Okay, this beautiful application is certified.
Thank you.
Item number four, page 52, is a certification for an amendment to the Waterside Urban Renewal Plan and disposition of city-owned property in Manhattan, Community District Six. Bob Tuttle is here to present.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So this is an application by the Department of Housing, Preservation, and Development for a disposition of city-owned property and an amendment of the Waterside Urban Renewal Plan to facilitate the long-term preservation of up to 325 affordable units, in addition to maintaining enhanced Section 8 voucher arrangements for 92 tenants in the Waterside Plaza development in the Kips Bay neighborhood of Manhattan, Community District Six. Now, as shown, well, this site shown here in the red dash line is roughly bounded by East 30th Street to the north, the East River to the east, East 23rd Street to the south, and the elevated FDR Drive to the west. South of the project site is a mix of institutional and commercial uses, including the United Nations International School, which is shown below the site in blue, also the New York Skyport Marina, the Skyway Parking Garage and a gas station, which are shown in pink. And then south of the gas station is Stevenson Cove Park, which runs along the East River and is one of the area's main open spaces. These uses are consistent with the area zoning districts that include R-8 on the school site, and then M-11 for the remaining lots. To the west of the site is Asser Levy Recreation Center, shown in green. This is the area's other main open space. Also to the west of the site are the institutional uses, shown in red and blue, and these include, these are the medical corridors. So they include the VA Hospital at the southern end, Bellevue Hospital, Alexandria Center, which is in the red, and then north of that is NYU Langone. To the south of the medical corridor is Peter Cooper Village in Stevenson Town. The zoning districts in the area are predominantly R-8, which allows for the hospital uses, the C-62 on the Life Science Lot, and then R-72 for the Tower and the Park Development in Stiat Town and Peter Cooper Village. And the surrounding area is served by local transit, pardon me, by mass transit, with the local six line at 23rd Street and 28th Street along Park Avenue, and then bus and ferry service is also within close proximity. Now, in 1964, the project site was zoned from R-8 to M-23 zoning district, and at that time, the area included two piers, which were at East 26th and East 27th. So in 1967, the Commission approved a series of actions to facilitate the existing Waterside Plaza on existing land and reclaimed portions of the East River. These actions included the designation of the urban renewal area, establishment of an urban renewal plan, approval of redevelopment of the urban renewal area, and a zoning change from an M-23 to a C-27 district. Now, these actions permitted the demolition of all the structures in the project area and the redevelopment of the area, predominantly for residential use, to an R-8 equivalent, with local retail and local service commercial uses accessory to those retail uses limited to 50,000 square feet of floor area. The Waterside URP was developed through the Mitchell-Lama Program, and the property was disposed to a private developer in 1970 through a 99-year lease that's set to expire in 2069. The development was constructed in 1974. This ground lease has been amended twice, most recently in October of 2016. This ground lease has been amended twice, most recently in October of 2001. The amended ground lease facilitated a settlement agreement in anticipation of the project's exit from the Mitchell-Lama Program. And it set forth an updated set of ground lease payments. In 2005, the development did exit Mitchell-Lama, at which time the settlement agreement between the owner and the tenants was effectuated. And that settlement agreement included rent protections for approximately 450 tenants. And that consisted of enhanced Section 8 vouchers and favorable rent and annual rent increases for existing tenants whose units had been subject to the Mitchell-Lama Program. Now, the existing Waterside Plaza consists of a central podium that includes retail offices, community facilities, parking, and a rooftop open space. The podium ranges in height from two to five stories and functions as a spine that connects the four residential towers along the building's northern, eastern, and southern sides. The residential towers range between 34 and 40 stories and contain 1,470 units. Following Superstorm Sandy, the site underwent resiliency measures, including the relocation of electronic circuitry above the sandy high-water line. The current lease agreement provides rental protections to tenants, not units. So as such, the number of affordable units are subject to decrease over time due to natural turnover. HPD seeks the approval of a disposition of city-owned property and amendment of the Waterside Urban Renewal Plan for a new 99-year term to facilitate the extension of the ground lease that would tie the affordability requirements to units. This would provide rent protections for up to 325 units for the life of the lease and maintain the enhanced Section 8 voucher arrangements for 92 tenants. The applicant's proposed amendment to the URP is included in your briefing package, and I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Questions from the commission? Yes, Commissioner Levin.
First off, I think it's pretty remarkable that we have a project where the original developer is still on the scene, still managing the property.
Yes.
And, you know, how often do we see that happen in this world where, you know, big projects turn over and new investment ownership comes in? And, I mean, this is a complicated enough project, but for it to be under single ownership and willing to recommit to affordability at this point is pretty great.
The other thing that I would note in that context is having been there recently, tremendously well-maintained.
I have a question about the units that will be designated as the affordable units. I know when it was built, at least from the briefing materials, it was the old, the old way of doing these things, where there were three middle and market-rate buildings and one low-income building. So presumably, the low-income units were all concentrated in one building. Where are the 325 units that are going to be rent-protected? Are they scattered throughout? Are they concentrated still in that initial low-middle building?
I am not sure. I'll check with HPD and let you know.
Yeah, I'd be curious to know about that.
Sure.
Really, just as a point of information, I think that's not, that issue is not before us, but interesting to see how this works.
Of course.
And also, the enhanced Section 8 voucher arrangements for the 92 tenants. Are those 92 tenants in some of the 325 rent-protected? Or is that additional?
The 325 is additional to the 92 that are receiving Section 8.
Okay, good. Thank you. Oh, and one last question about the East River Esplanade, which looks like it's built out there. Is that publicly accessible?
Yes.
Okay. And is there a, that's a, that's a challenging stretch for the East River Esplanade. But is there a city planning, is there a vision for what the East River Esplanade would look like if everything got connected? And does this fit into whatever that plan is?
EDC does have a plan for that. And then we also have East Side Coastal Resiliency, which will be coming up right to the southern terminus of this and includes Stevenson Cove Park. I don't believe that, because of the arrangement for this property, that EDC has any involvement with how this property is designed. But both of their projects on either side will connect.
Okay. This esplanade, well, I guess it's built, so it's not going anywhere. But it doesn't, I didn't see it mentioned in the urban renewal plan. Is it protected by the lease? Do we know it's always going to be there?
I will check on how it's written into the lease.
Thank you.
Yes, Vice Chair Knuckles.
So the affordability requirement will run for the life of the 99-year lease?
Correct.
Is that how it works?
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
You know, the question was raised about the esplanade, and I'm curious the degree to which, you know, accessibility is a responsibility of the owner, just the safety of that, that the esplanade there. I'm familiar with this area, and in fact, I bike frequently in front. And I was not aware that you could go closer to the water along the esplanade portion, you know, right on the water. I think most cyclists bike between the FDR and the property, which is, in fact, not particularly safe to bike down. And, you know, there are a lot of parking lots, entrances and exits, and sort of a one-way street condition that, really, I've always found quite dangerous. And so, you know, as long as we're here looking at this, it would be helpful to really understand. I've, as I said, I've never seen signage. I just have not, you know, I'm not particularly aware of it. And if anything can be done to address that, that issue, because there are a lot of children that bike up and down the FDR as well.
No, yes, I can follow up with HPD and C. I know that there is, you know, kind of more like a holistic thinking of how all these pieces are going to connect, because the city is aware that that's not the easiest place to bike through. And I know that EDC has had conversations with the community board about making that a better situation and how, and also DOT. So I'll try to see where we're at with all of those conversations and let you know.
Commissioner Dwyer.
Thank you. Clarifications and a question. The requested renewal is for an additional 99 years or 99 years from today?
It would be 99 years from the date that the...
From 2069?
No, sorry. It would, it will be from 2018, most likely, or, well, it'll be from 2019. It'll be after this approval, after City Council's approval. Then they'll sign a lease agreement. And from that date, the new 99-year lease would begin.
The new 99-year lease.
It would supersede the current lease.
Got it. So, and then the question would be, what kind of appraisals were done to ensure that we're, the city is getting a fair value for the property, for the, for the signing of the 99-year lease?
I'll follow up with HPD.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Okay, that is the last of today's certifications.
Item number five, page 99, is a pre-hearing review of a special permit in Manhattan Community District Three. Bob Tuttle will again present.
So this is a private application by Nine Orchard Partners LLC, seeking approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 74711 to modify the heightened setback regulations to allow approximately 2,135 square feet of the roof deck and a chairlift and stair to encroach on the sky-exposure plane in order to facilitate a transit hotel located at Nine Orchard Street and 60 Canal Street. Now, the development site is on a block bounded by Canal Street to the north, Orchard Street to the east, Division Street to the south, and Allen Street to the west. And the site is within a C62G zoning district in the Lower East Side of Manhattan Community District Three. The development site consists of a 12-story building, which was constructed in 1912 and was designated as an individual landmark in 2009. The building originally had a domed spire that was removed in the 1990s, and that's shown here in the photo. The reconstruction of the spire is already underway, as you can see. Now, the Department of Buildings and Landmark Preservation Commission have approved reconstruction of and access to the rebuilt spire. DOB determined that the domed spire is not subject to the underlying heightened setback limitations based on two considerations. One, the presence of the domed spire as part of the original construction. And two, that the structure is a permitted obstruction pursuant to Section 3342 of the zoning resolution. Therefore, the square footage of the domed spire beyond the sky-exposure plane is not part of this application. A new rooftop restaurant using floor area that was reallocated from other areas of the building has also been approved by DOB and LPC, also not part of this application. So what is part of this application? So the applicant proposes to raise the roof deck four feet, four inches, above the permitted obstruction height of three feet and six inches. And this is in order to accommodate the mechanical systems and bring the roof deck level to the same elevation as the new restaurant. And this will allow access from that restaurant to the restored dome spire via stairs and an ADA-compliant chairlift. The area of the proposed roof deck that requires the waiver is 2,135 square feet. The existing parapet, which is shown here in blue, will remain unchanged, and the entire proposed elevated roof deck will remain below the top of the parapet wall and will not be visible from the street. So in order to facilitate the leveling of the roof deck to connect the chairlift and the stairway that provide access to the dome, a special permit pursuant to Section 74711 is required to modify the heightened setback regulations of Section 33432. The community board approved the application with a vote of 21 in favor, five opposed, and one abstention. This was an approval having no, no conditions tied to it. And we expect the Borough President's recommendation later this afternoon, in which case we'll be able to provide that to you prior to tomorrow's public hearing. And with that, I'm open for questions.
Questions from the commission? Okay, then we're set for the public hearing on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Item six, page number 138, is a pre-hearing review of an acquisition for continued use as a childcare center in Manhattan Community District 12. Edwin Marshall is back to present.
Good afternoon, commissioners again. The Administration for Children's Services and the Department of Citywide Administrative Services are seeking a public facility acquisition by lease renewal approval to facilitate the continued use of a childcare facility. The facility is located within West, within Washington Heights in Manhattan Community District 12. The facility is located at 474 West 159th Street, and it is privately owned and has been leased as use as a childcare center since 1974. The commission approved the previous acquisition action back in 1994, and the facility is managed by the United Federation of Black Community Organizations. This image shows where the childcare center is located. It's located on the south side of West 159th Street, between St. Nicholas and Edgecombe Avenues. The facility comprises three components. There is a four-story facility, which has a little more than 22,000 square feet, a rooftop play space, which has a little bit more than 4,400 square feet. And the commission will note along Edgecombe Avenue, there's a little bit of red there outlining the upgrade play space, and that has a little bit more than about 1,800 square feet or so. The wave action, I did not put that in the slide. My PowerPoint skills are not quite that good, just so you know. Moving on, this is another image that shows the facility. It's an L-shaped site. You can see the upgrade play space along Edgecombe Avenue, and then you can see the, the four-story facility, as well as seeing the existing built condition and the surrounding neighborhood. This image shows what's happening on West 159th Street. It's a four-story building, accessed by main entrance with the two blue doors. And also, there's an entrance to the cellar, which is the brown store door located on the lower left-hand corner. This is what you see when you enter into the vestibule. Very lively-colored, a lot of positive messages, affirming messages for the young people. This is a typical classroom. This is on the second floor. There are two classrooms on the first floor, three on the second, one on the third, and three on the fourth. In total, there are 11 classrooms in this building. Nine are being used, two are vacant. This is the rooftop play area, which has a little bit more than 4,400 square feet. This is the upgrade play space, which has a little bit more than 1,800 square feet. And also, our urban design section came up with some improvements to improve the facade with more translucent screening on the, on the fencing on the roof, as well as to paint the front stucco to make it more child-friendly and more lively. This application was certified on May 21st and was referred out to Manhattan Community Board 12 and the Manhattan Borough President for public review. On June 26th, the community board, by a vote of 43 in favor, none opposed and none abstaining, and I must admit, that's a remarkable vote for Community Board 12, approved this, this application with three conditions. I will summarize their conditions. In summary, the conditions call for ACS and DCAS and the landlord to undertake improvements to the facility, including but not limited to the roof, windows, elevator, HVAC, et cetera, and to install new equipment to the extent practicable. Many of the issues raised by the community board, such as the repairs to the roof and the HVAC system, are in the scope of work. Also, the installation of sprinklers are also in the scope of work. Those repairs are being undertaken right now. Second condition is that the landlord undertake due diligence in maintaining the facility in a good state of repair and that ACS and DCAS keep the executive director of the childcare center and Community Board 12 apprised of all repairs and lease renewal discussions. As the chair said, this is for a public hearing, and DCAS and ACS will be here tomorrow to address the concerns raised by the community board. In terms of the Borough President, we are waiting for their recommendation. We expect to receive it this afternoon. If we do, we'll be able to forward to the commission prior to the public hearing tomorrow. And again, this is for a public hearing tomorrow.
Any questions? Okay, it's, oh, yes, Commissioner Levin.
Yes, I do have some questions about some of the information in the community board's resolution. They state that the executive director of the operator, UFBCO, has not conferred with the city about these changes, about the scope of work. I wonder if that really is possible, is how do you get the scope of work if you don't get to walk through the building and talk to the executive director? So I hope we can get clarification on that. I certainly hope that the executive director is part of ACS's planning process for improvements.
Yes.
And also, there's a statement in here that, I guess this application was originally filed in 2015. But the claim here is that the reason, the explanation for the delay is that city planning changed its policies and now requires a thorough review of lease renewals for childcare facilities with emphasis on the physical condition of facilities. Well, I think that's always been the case. And it doesn't explain a three-year delay in moving this application forward. So I hope we can get some clarification on that as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Efron.
Especially if we can reemphasize that the roof repair is something that probably should have been made in the ordinary course of business. And the fact that a delay may have actually resulted in children not being able to use a roof area that's substantially better than the upgrade one is really kind of germane to the question of how long it took.
I must mention, though, that the roof, there have been some roof repairs this year. There'll be additional repairs as well. So there has been some work done on the roof.
I apologize then. I made, I just made the conclusion that they weren't using the roof because it wasn't repaired.
They are using the roof. You know, it has been prepared, has been repaired this year. The, the leaks from the roof weren't so significant where the children could not access and use the roof for, for play.
Oh, because there didn't seem to be any equipment in the photos on the roof? And I think, in fact, the application said that they weren't using the roof.
They, they do use the roof. They use it since the roof has been repaired, yes. That's my understanding. But we, ACS will be here tomorrow, so they can clarify that.
Thank you.
And if you could give them the heads up, so they'll be sure to address those questions. Others? Okay, another matter for the public hearing on Wednesday.
Okay, thank you.
Item seven, page number 162, is a pre-hearing review of an acquisition, UDAP designation, and project approval and disposition in the Bronx Community District One. Manny Legarres is also returning to present.
Okay, 599 Corlin Avenue, that was certified June 11th of this year. And this is the project where it initially went through accelerated UDAP, and the applicant ever built, and is coming back under UDAP designation, project approval. Also, they will re-acquire HPD the project from the developer. If the commissioner, with the commissioner's permission, I can just go to the Borough President's recommendation? Or would you like me to go through the, okay? Or would you like me to go through the, okay. Oh, the presentation?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I thought of the presentation. Okay, the project is located in the Melrose section of Bronx Community District Number One in the South Bronx. The project located in the center, outlined in red, is within an R6 C24 zoning district. There is residential development to the east as well as to the west. And with this map here, you could get a better picture of the context, the residential and the commercial uses along Corlin Avenue. This is a photograph of the project site in the top, in the center. It is currently vacant and fenced. It's approximately 2,900 square foot lot, and it's adjacent to a vacant property belonging to the occupancy, the occupiers of the large building there, Psychotherapy. There are no plans for this development of this project. I've checked with the OB site, no plans at all. This is another photo of the vacant site, and the one in the bottom, if you look across the street, there is residential development, approximately five stories with ground floor commercial. This is the elevations for the project. It's actually a four, three-story building setting back 15 feet to a four-story. And, okay, approximately 42 feet in height. The community board recommendation, community board approved with conditions, the vote was 26 in favor, zero opposed, two abstentions, and their basic concern is local hiring and letting the board know how many jobs, et cetera, they are giving to the community. The Borough President's recommendation was approved with the following conditions. The one, the access to the trash room must be from within the building, as proposed. It's from outside the building. And they also want, the Borough President would like the door to be secure. And he also wants the applicant to provide an alternate type of fencing. Currently, they're proposing a chain link fence. Are there any questions?
Vice Chair Knuckles.
I just had a question. Does the new site, or does this take in the site that was, where the church was located?
No, the church was adjacent to this site.
Yeah.
And so that doesn't take that property. That's the vacant property that belongs to the Psychotherapy Association.
And how big is that site, the adjacent site?
It's almost the same size, almost. But I can check that for you.
Other questions? Commissioner Marin.
Manny, you cited the two items which I was going to point out. So the trash room and chain link fence, is the developer willing to accommodate?
Well, the HPD has been in contact with HPD, the applicant. They're looking into it. I spoke with the developer this morning, and he's amenable to providing both the trash room as the Borough President wants it, and also an alternate barrier to the chain link fence.
Thank you, Manny.
You're welcome.
Other, yes, Commissioner Levin.
Yeah, I have a question about the affordability levels that are proposed here. I realize it is a small, very small project, but the, there's information in the Borough President's recommendation about the proposed affordability levels, which indicates that there really would only be one unit at 60% AMI, and the rest would be at higher AMIs.
That's correct.
While the area, the local AMI is only $19,000 a year. So there's a, there's a wide gap between the proposed rent levels here and the surrounding population. And this is city-owned land, so I'd be interested to hear from the developer how they got to that unit mix, and whether there have been any conversations with HPD about city resources that might help affordability here reach more local levels.
Okay. Commissioner De La Oso, who's not here today, she had brought that up. She noticed that the, the levels for AMI were pretty low, and she had asked me to speak with HPD to find if they have any Section 8 programs that might be available to this. I spoke with HPD, and they told me that due to the fact that it's a very small project, there's no Section 8 funding for it. Also, they're maximizing funding towards the development of this project as it goes through the process, not the usual process, but it's, you know, it goes into construction, et cetera.
Yes, Commissioner Marin.
I'm a little bit confused. I thought this was a for-sale project. All the, the project summary from HPD indicates that this is currently contemplated to be a for-sale product, and there is a rental fallback, so.
Okay, yes, I'll look into that for you. And also, HPD, they're here, they're taking notes, and they'll be at the public hearing tomorrow to answer those questions. You're very welcome.
Other questions that HPD or the developers should be prepared for? Okay, then we're ready for the public hearing tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, item eight, page number 195, is a pre-hearing review of an acquisition for continued use of a childcare center in Brooklyn Community District 5. Alexandra Patti Diaz is here to present.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is a proposed action by NCACS and DCAST for a public facility acquisition to facilitate the lease renewal for the continued use of Friends of Crown Height 17 Childcare Center. The site has been used to provide childcare since 1992 and was subject to a previous acquisition approved by the Commission in 1992. The daycare is located in East New York, neighborhood of Brooklyn, Community District 5, at 921 Egeman Avenue. Surrounding zoning is primarily R5, and surrounding land use is predominantly residential with one and two-family as well as multifamily buildings. There are some community facilities and open spaces around the project area, which is also located close to public transportation. New Lot subway station of the three line, the last one, is located three blocks to the west of the site. Several bus lines serve the area as well. The facility is located in a one-story building that sits on approximately 24,000 square foot privately owned lot and includes a total floor area of approximately 25,000 square feet, all of which is used by the daycare center. The center serves up to 100 preschoolers aged from two to five-year-old in five classrooms. Children may attend from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM from Monday to Friday. The center is staffed with 24 staff members, and the building includes seven classrooms, five used by the daycare, and two used by the after-school program, two multipurpose rooms, staff lounge and offices, support areas, and the main kitchen. All appear to be in good condition. The scope of work includes the installation of full fire sprinkler system. Community Board did not held a meeting or issue any recommendations for this project. The Borough President recommended to approve this project, which was received last Friday. My apologies that the slide wasn't updated, but I believe you have the recommendations. DCAST has proposed a 15-year lease. Open to answer any questions.
Any questions? Yes, Commissioner Efron.
I have a question. I wonder if DCAST will be able to discuss with us whether an even longer-term lease or options is possible, given the real estate pressures in this neighborhood? And also, given that this site is a rather large, single-story site, how the agency looks at this for future planning, whether there's any opportunity for a net lease for affordable housing on top or things like that? This is a rare one in which it's a single story and a very, a neighborhood with great
Other questions? Okay, this will go to the public hearing on Wednesday as well.
Item nine, page number 223, is a pre-hearing review of a site selection and acquisition in Brooklyn Community District 6. Kevin Kraft is here to present.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is an application submitted by the Department of Transportation and DCAST for the site selection and acquisition of a privately owned property in order to facilitate its use as a DOT fleet vehicle maintenance and repair facility located within the southwest Brooklyn industrial business zone at 2514th Street in Gowanus Community District 6 in Brooklyn. The project site outlined in the black dash line is approximately 124,000 square feet. It's comprised of the entirety of Block 1031 and is bounded by Hamilton Place to the west, 13th Street to the north, Second Avenue to the east, and 14th Street to the south. The site is located within an M21 zoning district, and the surrounding area consists primarily of parking facilities, industrial and manufacturing, and transportation and utility uses. Across Hamilton Avenue, further to the south of the project site, located within an M31 zoning district, is DOT. DOT's Hamilton Avenue Asphalt Plant, which produces asphalt used by DOT to resurface the city's streets. Running above Hamilton Avenue on an elevated structure is the Gowanus Expressway, which provides access to the Brooklyn Battery Tunnel and Brooklyn Queens Expressway. The site is also near the FG and R trains, as well as four bus lines. The project site contains an existing two-story building, which is approximately 63,000 square feet. It's a brick garage structure that is currently vacant and was formerly used as a vehicle maintenance and repair facility for a private ambulance fleet. Here are some photos of the existing building. As you can see, the project, this existing building has existing garage stores. There are 12 that are front onto 13th Street to the north. And then here are some surrounding area photos. You can see the Gowanus Expressway on the elevated line, as well as Hamilton Avenue and some surrounding businesses. DOT plans to site select and acquire this space for the purpose of maintaining its fleet of vehicles. Shown here is the site plan for the, for the facility. DOT is proposing 38,000 square feet dedicated for truck repairs. There is also an approximately 18,000 square foot staging yard, which would be used for staging repaired vehicles and vehicles awaiting maintenance. That area can accommodate up to 60 vehicles. There is also an approximately 7,500 square foot accessory employee parking lot, which can accommodate up to 25 vehicles. Work at the facility will be conducted Monday through Friday with 15 onsite DOT employees. This application was certified by the Department of City Planning on May 21st, and on July 9th, Community Board 6 voted 14 in favor, zero opposed, and one abstaining to approve with conditions. The conditions included that DOT adopt a stormwater runoff mitigation strategy, that DOT reviews its truck routes for access to this facility, and that DOT encourage employees to use mass transit instead of personal vehicles to access the site. On July 11th, the Brooklyn Borough President held a public hearing on this application. There were no speakers. And on August 10th, the Borough President submitted a recommendation to approve with conditions. The conditions included that the lease term would include roof rights to implement any combination of incorporating blue and/or green roof treatment or solar panels. And the applicants have expressed that the scope of work for lease improvements is actually taken into consideration using solar panels on the roof. The Borough President also recommended that rain gardens be incorporated in the abutting street right-of-ways, and that DOT retain Brooklyn-based contractors and subcontractors, especially those designated local business enterprises and minority and women-owned business enterprises, and that the future consideration be given to a full build-out of the site as a means to consolidate the city facilities with the Department of Sanitation. And finally, that Department of City Planning initiate a study of the Gowanus portion of the southwest Brooklyn IBZ as a means to achieve more flood-resilient development. I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, then we are ready for the public hearing on Wednesday. Thanks.
Item 10, page number 248, is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map and zoning text amendments, special permits, UDAP designation, project approval, disposition of city-owned site, site selection and acquisitions. Anthony Grande is here to present.
Good afternoon. This is an application by Brownsville Livonia Associates LLC, New York City Housing Preservation and Development, or HPD, the Parks Department, and DCAST for six land use actions to facilitate the development of seven new eight- and nine-story mixed-use buildings containing 724 affordable housing units on vacant sites in the existing Marcus Garvey Village. The project area is located in the Brownsville neighborhood of Brooklyn, Community District The project area is located in central Brownsville along the Livonia Avenue Transit Corridor. The elevated MTA 3 train runs through the center of the project area with a station at Rockaway Avenue, less than one block away from the project area. The surrounding area has a mix of building forms ranging from low, mid, to high-rise buildings, including a large area of public housing development directly to the east. The surrounding area is primarily residential in character with neighborhood retail uses located along Rockaway Avenue and Livonia Avenue. The zoning in the project area and most of the surrounding area is R6 with commercial overlays primarily found along Rockaway Avenue. The proposed project area is portions of 10 blocks, primarily consisting of the existing Marcus Garvey Village affordable housing complex of three-story walk-up apartments with a total of 625 existing residential units. There are also several vacant parcels and parking lots found mostly along Livonia Avenue used to meet the parking requirement of the existing buildings. The proposed development sites consist of seven sites that are either vacant or surface parking. Sites A through E have frontage on Livonia Avenue, while sites F and G are one block to the south and north respectively on Chester Street. The proposed developments would be seven new eight- and nine-story mixed-use buildings. The development would total approximately 632,000 square feet of residential floor area, 98,000 square feet of community facility, and 35,000 square feet of commercial floor area. The residential components would include a total of 724 residential units, which would be 100% affordable. Buildings A through E would be a maximum of eight stories, while buildings F and G would be a maximum of nine stories. The proposed buildings would have design controls in place through the land use actions to mandate a variety of heights, setbacks, recesses, and step downs, as seen here in the rendering of Building B. These urban design controls were developed by the applicants in collaboration with the Department's urban design staff and would be mandatory under the site plan controls of the proposed actions. Buildings D and E are seen here. We can see additional examples of the design controls just described, as well as the context with the elevated rail along Livonia Avenue. The design controls would allow only non-residential ground floors along Livonia Avenue, in addition to requiring a five-foot widened sidewalk, creating a more active and inviting pedestrian experience, bringing more light to the street level as well. All buildings adjacent to existing Marcus Garvey buildings would be required to step down to a maximum of five stories closest to the existing buildings. This rendering shows a portion of Chester Street, where we can see Building F. And also, this building, this rendering shows Chester Street as well with Building G. In order to facilitate the proposed development, the applicants propose six land use sections. First, the proposed zoning map amendment would change the existing R6 district to an R72 district on all seven proposed development sites, and map a C24 commercial overlay within portions of the R72 along Livonia Avenue. Just as a reminder, the, in the R72 district, the base height is 75 feet. The maximum building height is 135 feet, although through the design controls of the proposed actions, all the buildings would be capped at 100 feet in this development. The proposed zoning text amendment would map a new MIH area, coterminous with the rezoning area, allowing for program options 1 and 2. The proposed special permit would establish a large-scale general development over the existing and proposed Marcus Garvey buildings, and establish design control over the buildings through the site plan, while allowing a specific set of waivers for the proposed buildings. This is a list of the waivers. The special permit would allow four specific types of waivers. Base height waiver for buildings, actually all of the buildings, A through E would be 95 feet. F and G would be a maximum of 100 feet. Lot coverage waiver for a portion of two sites, and then the distance between buildings waivers, both for window-to-window, and then also the window-to-wall distances for buildings B, D, and E. The fourth action proposed by the applicants is a zoning, a special permit to waive the parking requirements. As a reminder, this special permit was created as part of ZQA in 2016 to facilitate affordable housing in transit-oriented areas where underutilized surface parking lots exist. The applicants proposed to waive all 294 parking spaces. The final two actions are city actions. One is an HPD action for a UDAP designation, project approval, and disposition of city-owned property on portions of Sites C and E, which include the 3,000-square-foot community garden on Site C. The other action is by NYC Parks and DCAST for an acquisition and site selection for an approximately 6,000-square-foot site that is currently vacant and owned by the applicant, and would become a new city-owned community garden. The gardeners at the existing garden within Development Site C would be accommodated in a portion of this new garden. This application was certified on June 25, 2018. On June 26, Brooklyn Community Board 16 held a public hearing and a vote on the application, voting 13 in favor and 17 opposed. There were no conditions or modifications attached to the recommendation, and we have not yet received a recommendation from the Borough President. Thank you.
Questions? Commissioner Vice Chair Knuckles.
About the 17, was that around affordability, or what was the basis for the opposition?
Yeah, so I did attend the hearing and just listened in. So the discussion revolved, actually mostly around the parking. So there were questions about the loss of these parking lots, and there were also questions about the affordability. And I'd say those were the two main topics, but again, the board did not include any of this information with the recommendation.
Thank you.
Commissioner Levin.
Well, that was essentially my question, but glad it got asked. You know, it's really, it's a missed opportunity by a community board to not explain their votes to us, because sometimes there's an opportunity to address some of these issues. I'm sure you all tried to make that evident to the community board, but anyway, that's kind of beside the point. There is a lot of community facility space throughout this project, some in each building. Are there community facility tenants selected yet?
I'm not sure if there are specific tenants. I'll let the applicants describe their relationship with local community groups.
Great. And I think also, when this was referred out, or when this was certified, you indicated that they were looking at using Ella and working with HPD on figuring out an affordability program here. At the hearing, it'd be great if they could give us an update on where they are in those conversations and what affordability looks like.
Okay.
And I had one more related to that. Never mind. It'll come to me tomorrow.
Okay.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Hi, good afternoon. I was wondering, could you go to the zoning change map?
Yes.
I'm sort of curious about the rationale. Yeah, the rationale behind the commercial overlay on Livonia, and what's happening on Rockway. I mean, there's obviously a commercial overlay on Rockaway Avenue. Is that serving local needs? How are businesses doing there? You know, we're going to be adding another 30,000, 35,000 square feet of retail, according to the application, and curious how these two districts will interface, if at all, and if there's sufficient demand for much more new retail.
Right. So Rockaway Avenue really is kind of the major north-south corridor in Brownsville, and so we see these commercial overlays. You know, most of Rockaway Avenue has mixed-use buildings or commercial uses on the ground floors. A lot of Livonia Avenue, you know, like in this area here, has actually vacant lots for reasons that, you know, we've discussed before with the elevated rail. But Livonia Avenue itself is sort of the major east-west corridor in this area as well. So I think, you know, the rationale here with the overlays is to, you know, activate Livonia Avenue and create more non-residential uses in these ground-floor spaces, some of which would be community facilities, some of which would be residential. All of the spaces would have flexibility built into the design, so as the needs of the developer change over time, some space could be community facility and some could be commercial, so they're not necessarily locked in there. But this area in general, you know, there's not as many services for people in the community in this portion of Brownsville as compared with the northern part of Brownsville near to Pitkin Avenue, which has a really vibrant, you know, commercial corridor.
About how far is Pitkin?
It's hard to say. It's a bus ride away. It's a little more than a walk. But, you know, from the outreach that's been done by HPD during the Brownsville planning process, we did hear from residents in this area that, you know, they would like to see more services and retail located closer to them, because, you know, there just aren't as many opportunities in this area that some other neighborhoods have.
I'm not familiar with Rockaway Avenue. What's, what kind of retail is there now? And do they have, you know, are some of those needs being met by Rockaway? How are those businesses doing, really?
It's hard to say how they're doing. I know a lot of the storefronts are in business. There's small restaurants there, convenience stores, you know, some type of retail. Most of it, I think, you know, just looking at the land use map, most of it is commercial or mixed-use in the blocks to the north, and then also going to the south, there are mixed-use or actually standalone commercial as well there. I believe down two blocks to the south, there's a supermarket along Rockaway Avenue. So, you know, I don't see vacancies when I walk along Rockaway Avenue in the storefronts, so that I can say.
Yeah. I guess, you know, my concern is that, you know, we're adding retail in a location that, you know, may detract from Rockaway Avenue, which has retail and which may be, you know, what you want to strengthen and not necessarily undermine, you know, existing businesses there. And since we don't know what kind of market demand there is for existing businesses, you know, residents wishing they can get something is different than knowing that we can support new business. And I, you know, continue to sort of push on this, you know, economic rationale for why we're putting ground-floor retail where we might want to think about, you know, residential development and getting more units, you know.
I think that the department, and I don't want to speak necessarily for the Brooklyn office, but on Livonia Avenue to have ground-floor residential units seems inappropriate, given the elevated rail line. I think that that is something that the department has
We've heard that before, but
Been pretty firm on across the agent, across the city.
I think, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't, it's a challenge, right? What do we do with this ground-floor space? We certainly don't want vacancies. We certainly don't want inactive ground-floor uses. You know, there's, as our fellow commissioner has mentioned, there's a lot of community facility space that's, you know, do we have a community facility in mind? This, I'm not saying this is something easy, but, you know, I just want to push on us to sort of think about and not necessarily accept that the ground floor should be commercial.
I do want to emphasize, it is not mandatory retail. It is commercial. It's non-residential.
Yes, which is why I said "commercial."
No, very much so. And then the second is, we can have the developer, when they're here tomorrow, address it and how they see the synergies, the interplay between Rockway and Livonia. And again, I will note the deep planning that went into HPD's Brownsville plan and hearing from the community about their desire for having more active ground floor. Yes, Commissioner Levin.
That actually triggered the question that I forgot a minute ago, and that was to ask how the planning for this application has coordinated with the planning work in the Brownsville planning process. Are those two integrated plans? There's a lot of HPD work being done in the area as well.
So there, this would be sort of in line with that vision, but it was not directly part of that planning process.
No, I understand. But are they talking to each other? Are they, are we, are we developing something that's going to look seamless if it all gets developed as everybody wishes?
Yes. Well, DCP is in all of the conversations, so we sort of bridge between HPD and developers as well. So yes, I mean, I think that, and HPD is also an applicant on this, and they're very much aware of this, and their financing team is in discussions. And so I think from HPD's perspective, they can speak to it tomorrow if they wish to, but, you know, this is part of fulfilling those goals from that Brownsville plan.
Because it does seem that there's been an impressive amount of work already done in the Livonia Avenue corridor, and this looks like it fits in very well. And actually, to the previous conversation about ground-floor commercial, it does seem to me that there is a need. You know, you've got the NYCHA campuses right across the street. There's really not all that much commercial there, but we're doubling the number of residential units in Marcus Garvey Village alone. So there'll be an increased population. Would hope that it could support. I mean, the question is a good one, but could have a good answer.
Commissioner Arfron.
Yes, it feels like a very small point, given the existential questions that came before this, but as people are walking down from the two-story houses on Thomas S. Boyland Street towards the elevated, towards Livonia Avenue, what is the treatment of that wall facing the community garden? I think they did come up at the, at the
Facing, I'm sorry, which location? So
I'm sorry, I don't know what slide. It's slide nine, I guess, in the page.
Okay. Let me try to
Yeah. So what is the condition of that wall as you're coming down Thomas S. Boyland Street to Livonia Avenue for those residents? Is it a blank wall? Is it?
I don't think the applicants have provided that. I think they could address that at the public hearing.
It's just one of the few places in this development where you actually do come up against a lower-scale neighborhood pretty directly, and
Yeah. And, you know, it's, so, and it is a lot line, unless, unlike some of the other portions where there's a larger lot with existing Marcus Garvey buildings. This is sort of coming up against a lot line with a different property owner there. So, right, like there couldn't be windows there, legal windows. So I'll allow the applicants to address the
Thank you.
The facade in that location.
If you could go forward one slide. I find it interesting that with the CAD software, we get ever-more realistic renderings, and I love the fact that there is someone reading their iPhone on the street.
It's very realistic, I'd say.
Other questions? Okay, we'll have a public hearing on Wednesday.
Okay, moving on to future votes. Staff have prepared reports for consideration on September 5th for the following. The LSS NY Early Life Center 2, which is, just to remind you, because we've had a few with similar names, this is one in the Bronx, adjacent to an elevated train line. The Watson Avenue Early Childhood Center, also in the Bronx Community District 9. PAL Arnold and Marie Schwartz Early Learning Center in Brooklyn Community District 5. 180 Myrtle Avenue in Brooklyn Community District 2. And 6902 Queens Boulevard. There might be questions on that, but I think not. Okay. Also scheduled for decisions on September 5th are Canton and Holcomb Avenues Certification for Future Subdivision on Staten Island Community District 3, and the Haven Esplanade Lot 17, Authorizations for Development in a Steep Slope or Steep Slope Buffer and Modifications to Lot Coverage Controls in Staten Island. Staff have prepared a report for consideration on September 26th for a landmark designation of 550 Madison Avenue. Moving on to post-hearing follow-up, we have Jackie Sun Woo from HEIP to discuss the M1 Hotel Text Amendment.
Good afternoon. Thank you. My name is Jackie from HIP, and I'm here to follow up on the public hearing for the M1 Hotel Text Amendment and to recommend modifications to the proposal. On April 23rd of this year, Department of City Planning referred out a proposal that would require a City Planning Commission special permit for new hotels, motels, and boutels in light manufacturing or M1 district citywide. In the past few years, New York City's tourism has really boomed, and we have seen significant increase in hotel development in the city, particularly in the M1 districts. In these areas, hotels could result in land use conflicts by creating unsafe conditions and other nuisance such as unpleasant streetscapes. Therefore, we believe that a case-by-case site-specific review process is necessary to ensure that hotels are built only on appropriate sites, minimizing conflicts in industrial areas, and creating balanced mix of uses in the neighborhoods. During the community board review process, we received a total of 36 recommendations out of the 59 community boards. 14 boards approved, while 18 boards approved with conditions. Further, all five borough presidents approved a proposal with conditions, except for the Bronx Borough President who supported the proposal with no conditions. For borough boards, three boards, Manhattan, Brooklyn, and Queens, approved the text amendment with conditions, and we did not receive the remaining two recommendations. On June 29th, the DCP filed a modification to the original text amendment, which would modify the geographic applicability of the proposed action to include all M1 districts immediately adjacent to JFK and LaGuardia airports. This was mainly in response to the community board review process, particularly from the Queens Borough President and the community boards. Their main concern was that there are many residential areas around the airports with schools, and that there was a need for restrictions on hotels in these neighborhoods. Consequently, on July 25th, a City Planning Commission public hearing was held for both the original and amended proposal. I'll briefly recap the main concerns and recommendations from the community boards, as well as the public hearing. During the public hearing, we had a total of seven speakers, with three in support and four in opposition. The supporters generally noted that the proposal is meaningful step towards restricting a competing use from industrial areas, and that hotels in M1 districts are out of context, creating creating land use conflicts. Many community boards also supported the proposal, noting that the oversaturation of hotels in the neighborhoods has been affecting the character of their areas. On the other hand, one of the concerns that came up repeatedly was that the hotel special permit findings are relatively vague and need to be more specific. So for instance, community boards have noted that the findings should include streetscape provisions, conditions for flood resiliency, additional parking and/or concentration of hotels. Another aspect community boards wanted more clarity on was the definition of a public purpose. So currently, the proposed zoning text reads, the special permit will not be required for transient hotels operated for a public purpose, and community boards have voiced that it should be more specific in the zoning text itself. Furthermore, many community boards have also expressed that the transient hotels for a public purpose should also be subject to the hotel special permit. Another clarification requested in the zoning text was regarding the existing ground floor use restrictions in M1 5A and M1 5B districts, which are SoHo and NoHo neighborhoods. Manhattan Community Board 2 has specifically requested that the proposed hotel special permit not supersede existing provisions such as the good faith marketing provision, which is 74781, and/or 74711, which is a landmark preservation special permit. Additionally, we received several requests from hotel developers and property owners to modify the vesting date to the date of adoption rather than the date of referral. This would grandfather more hotel projects in. Stakeholders who spoke in opposition also noted that the text amendment could result in lack of affordable housing, lack of affordable hotels, and emphasized that the tourism industry is a critical lynchpin to the city. So given everything that we heard, we would like to propose additional modifications to the original proposal for the commission to consider. So first, responding to the concerns regarding the definition of a public purpose, we recommend specifying the existing language to say that the special permit shall not be required for a transient hotel operated exclusively for the public purpose of temporary housing assistance. We also heard concerns regarding existing ground floor use, as mentioned before. Therefore, we recommend modifying the zoning text to clarify that while the 74781, the good faith marketing provision, is necessary in conjunction with the proposed hotel special permit, 74711, the landmark preservation special permit, can be sought as an alternative to this proposed hotel special permit. While the landmark preservation special permit has defined findings for certain uses within the historic district, 74781, the good faith marketing provision, must be retained as it serves a very distinct purpose for the neighborhoods. Furthermore, to respond to the request to include additional consideration for street wall findings, we recommend the commission, we recommend including another finding for the commission to consider, and it'll be that the site plan demonstrates that the proposed street wall location and design, as well as the landscaping, result in site design that does not impair with the character of the existing streetscape. However, we do not recommend the commission to make the modifications to adopt the ATAX or change the vesting date. So first off, the ATAX, which would make the M1 districts adjacent to airport properties subject to a hotel special permit, could potentially diminish hotel production in M1 zones near airports. And given the importance of the aviation industries to the city, this alternative could potentially limit the appeal of the airports as travel destinations and costing, it could cost the aviation industry and result in fewer jobs for the city. Furthermore, our analysis has found that the current hotels near airports are actively serving this industry, and we believe that this trend should continue. Furthermore, we do not recommend that the commission modify the vesting date from the date of referral to the date of adoption. We believe that the vesting provision that was referred out is already liberal enough and are concerned that a different standard may be difficult to establish based on the objective milestones in the Department of Building Permitting process. Also, as of mid-August, there are approximately 17 hotel projects who have obtained DOB permits post-referral, and we believe that these projects have the option to either vest or go to the BSA. The recommended modifications address many of the concerns that were voiced during the community board review process as well as the public hearing. And while we acknowledge and understand additional concerns that may have come up during this time, we believe the listed modifications are the most logical to consider at this time. Thank you.
Questions? Okay, thank you, Jackie.
Thank you.
Also, for post-hearing, the Hebrew Home for the Aged. I have been informed that the applicant will be filing a revised application that his, will be consistent with the recommendations of the Bronx Borough President and the agreement that was discussed at the hearing. The technical review has been reviewing a draft, so we know what their materials are for. Also, for post-hearing discussion, 2050 Barto Avenue Animal Shelter. The DOHMH Mobile Food Vendor Inspections. Believe there's an outstanding image that we'll be providing for the commission at a later follow-up date on that. 3109 Ninth Avenue rezoning. The Friends of Crown Heights 16 Childcare Center. The Variety Boys and Girls Club rezoning. 1114 35th Avenue rezoning. St. Michael's Park elimination. And the Staten Island Coastal Risk Management Phase 2. Your questions? Oh?
I think we're out of here.
Okay, this concludes the review session for the New York City Planning Commission of September 4, 2018. The time is 3:21.